Public Health and Safety Committee to order roll call, please.
Alderman Lozaro.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, March thirteenth, two thousand fourteen.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Oh, I made the motion. I made the motion.
Oh, I'll second it then.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, amendment to ordinance fifteen point two oh six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, this is, we're looking to get an amendment to the city ordinance fifteen point two zero six that has to prohibit parking on the north side of Potter Street near the intersection of Clare Court. The parking restriction would extend for fifty feet to the east of the intersection on the north side of the street. Some background on this, the department and some of the elected officials have received some complaints from the citizens from Area I saying that they, when they pull out of Area I, they can't see to the east as they're trying to egress that lot. So, when, in working with the Georgetown Square Management, there was a yellow stripe painted for fifty feet to the east to help with it, but during snow and heavy leaf fall, it's hard to see the yellow curb. So, what we're seeking is an amendment to the ordinance and then to have Public Works erect a sign after that, no parking. And then we would have a two-week grace period to educate the public that there'd be no parking in that area.
Okay, so that's your motion. I'll make that in form of motion to amend ordinance fifteen dot twenty oh six.
I'll second.
Questions? Boys, everyone on this side today. Alderman Eugene Wesley. I, I have one question. Is this area, are these Georgetown people that park there?
Yes.
And is that overnight parking there?
If you're talking on Potter, it is overnight parking. And there's already a yellow stripe there that encourages them to not park there currently, so we're not displacing any cars at this point.
So, I do follow. Of course. My question, normally the townhouses have two parking spaces per townhouse. And for additional parking, they use the parking on Station Drive for where permit are at. So, my question is, where are they going to move these cars to? And are they going to be further down the street and then we have a problem there again? I mean, and then we'll be back here again saying they can't park there. I just...
Well, the fifty feet is only going to cover two and a half parking spaces when you, when you measure it out. And there's already been a yellow stripe that's already in place with the agreement with the Georgetown Square Management to put that yellow stripe down. So, those cars have already been displaced. So, there isn't any other further impact that would be going on other than amending the ordinance and then after the ordinance is amended and then having the sign put up.
Mike?
This isn't the Georgetown area, correct?
This is. It's a Georgetown townhouse.
How many cars are allowed by the association, if any Aldermen might know? How many cars per building are allowed there? And do you know by off chance if we have cars exceeding that?
That I don't know, but in Area I, there's fifty spaces if you count them out. And there's approximately thirty-two units that use that area. So, you're talking fifty vehicles that need to leave that lot that have trouble seeing to the east. And it is a dangerous sightline. I pulled out of there the other day just to see what they're talking about. And it is very difficult. You have to go into the middle roadway just to get in safely.
Okay.
Alderman Witten? My only one concern was that this doesn't just leapfrog and then every intersection along there wants fifty feet. And if that's so, then there is no parking on the street because parking is an issue over there. So, the only reason we're addressing this is because the curvy linear nature of the street at that location.
Yes, right. That's the only anomaly is you see the curvature. And that's what causes the sightline issue.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions? Can we have a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Turn on my mic. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second item we have is we're seeking to, your approval to, to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and the Wooddale Park District for the provision of certain police services. During the winter months, we provide services to the Park District and they reimburse us for bank runs and for pool crossing guards. And this would be a two-year agreement. The verbiage is, is identical, other than a four percent increase in the first fiscal year coming up and then also another four percent increase in the second fiscal year. So, we would just be seeking your approval. And then the Park District Board is going to be ratifying an identical agreement on April twenty-second and then we'll be bringing it back to council on May first for your approval.
Boy, we've got all these questions. We'll start on this side today. Okay. Make a motion to go in an intergovernmental agreement with the Wooddale Park District.
For the Wooddale Park District.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Jacobs?
On three point three, it says the Park District shall have the right to terminate whither thou cause upon fifteen-day notice. I did not see that for the city. Does the city have that right as well?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is that written in here somewhere? I don't know if I dismissed it or... And that's three point three where it talks about the Park District?
Correct. I do not see it. But to my understanding, we would have cause to do so. If there was any reason that would come up, we could...
Could, could you have the attorney amendment and put that in there?
Thank you.
Well, we could amendment too, but it still has to be approved by the attorney. Alderman Wesley? Okay, stop. You, Alderman Wesley.
Yeah, my question has to do with, we're increasing the rate by four percent. Does that cover our costs?
Correct. That does cover our costs. And it's due to the increase in personnel costs.
Okay.
And that was figured out on a schedule by Chief Vesta.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
And just so you know, the, the agreement is the same standing one that's been for years. You know, I don't know if that helps you with, with your thought. And we've never had any reason, whether it's been the Park District or our, to have any cause or reason to, to terminate the agreement.
Alderman Wesley? I, it just came to me now. The, I know it's got to do with the crossing guards. And I, you don't have to share with me how much the crossing guards get paid. But if they pass that law down in Washington, if men wages go up to ten dollars an hour, is that inflecting here or not?
I think we'd have to go back to the table with the Park District and then seek their agreement on the intergovernmental agreement to proceed forward.
So, there may be another one then down the line?
It's a possibility.
Okay. Another question. Alderman Jacobs?
Yeah, one, one other question. There was, it talks about a four percent increase twice. Is that what it was in the past, four percent?
Well, the four percent is for each fiscal year. The agreement is only for two years. So, in the first fiscal year or the, in the first year of the, of the agreement, there's a four percent increase. In the second year, there's another four percent increase.
Well, is that what it was in the past too?
No, no. It's, the, the services or the fee services have stayed stagnant for several years.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, are we going to amend?
We had a motion, a second.
Right, but the amended part adding the fifteen day.
Adding fifteen percent or fifteen days.
Right. To my understanding, it's to go back to the attorney and to have that added.
Who is the first one? I, me and... You agree with that?
I agree.
Okay. Let's do another one.
I concur.
Let's do another one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Rebus, thank you for coming. Good job.
Actually, there's a couple items, if I may, for, for future consideration, so...
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, well, the bike patrol that we have listed on the agenda, we're gonna...
I got something I want to add also.
Okay. Very quickly, I'll speak then. The bike patrol, we're going to go over that sometime after May one. The chief's going to come back with the ILEUS agreement, April twenty-fourth. And then also the, the prospect speed bump situation. He's going to speak on that in the near future.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Just to let everybody know, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, five p.m. to eight p.m., the VFW is holding a spaghetti and meatball dinner, which includes salad, bread, and dessert, eight dollars per plate, music and karaoke by Band in the Box from eight to twelve. It's always open to the public. The VFW, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, five p.m., eight p.m., spaghetti meatball dinner. Thank you.
Alderman Wesley? On these, on this bike patrol unit that we are looking at, was that even, was that even in this year's budget even considered? So, my question is, why are we going to waste our time if ain't in the budget for May one?
We requested to put it on the agenda to inform the council more about the program and then perhaps consider future funding. It's been quite some time since we've talked about the program, so this is going to be an informative presentation on the program.
We put, we put that thing as on the agenda that's not in the budget item, but... Another question? Go ahead.
We already do something in Georgetown by the townhomes, only a foot patrol or something, I heard, correct?
Yes.
I know we don't have a building zoning committee, but it's Public Health and Safety. I came home to my business today and I found an X on my Parkway. And I know what that means, is a tree. And, you know, we've talked about beautifying Wooddale and the committee approved it. And this council approved that too. But I made it perfectly clear to staff to notify the businesses well in advance. And now I caught up Jennifer today and she says, oh, the letters went out today and give me two weeks' notice that the tree's going to be, be put in within the next two weeks. This council never seen where those trees were going. I asked to see a map. That map never came to this council, and I'm not saying it had to. But my point is, you think that the City of Wooddale and the Building Department would go out and talk to these businesses instead of putting a tree in front of their business and possibly blocking a sign or their building that they might want to improve. Instead, you're going to send a letter and say, we're putting a tree in. I think we should have the Building Department, we're not that, that busy with the Building Department, that she could go, go out there and talk to these businesses and inform them personally, one-on-one. They had all wanted to do it, and I'm kind of upset that a letter will go out with only two weeks' notice. So, I'm directing, I'm telling the city manager about this so he could address it. And hopefully, we won't have this happen again. What are you looking at him for? It's my committee.
He looked at me, so I looked at him.
Oh, okay.
Well, he was looking at you.
Go ahead.
Sure, yeah. I know we spoke about this earlier, so we'll address the issues. And I assured you that we'd make sure to give it a, a personal touch moving forward in the future. The one thing I, it was weird because I couldn't remember talking about this at all. So, after we spoke, I went back and reviewed the tape. And I didn't remember it because I was absent that meeting. That was when I was having my surgery. So, I'm like, that's why I don't remember. But then I went back and I did, I looked at the packet. We did have some maps in there, so there was some maps and locations in the packet.
Wasn't on my property.
Well, we can look at the maps after.
Okay. But my point is, the businesses in town, they pay money to the City of Wooddale, and they don't get a lot of service. On Irving Park Road, I don't get my street plowed. I don't get my street swept. So, I don't have yard waste. I don't, I don't have brush pickup. But my point is, we could bend over a little extra and help them out too and give them a little personal touch.
Personal touch is always good. I agree.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? I need a motion for...
So, move?
Second.
They want me to shut up. It already passed. Don't worry.
All right. I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order roll call taker note, same people are here. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on March twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. Have a report and recommendation on the street wall, Phase One B on NWWTP. I'd like to turn that over to staff, please.
All right. Thank you, sir. Staff is here today looking for consensus from the city council on the screen wall that is to the west of the main driveway at the wastewater treatment plant. I understand that in the past, there's been discussions regarding the wall between the new administration building and New Building Fifty, as well as from the eastern edge of the existing screen wall to the eastern edge of the property. That's not what is in question right now, and that will be discussed at a later date. What is in the proposal is twofold. Change the original design of the screen wall adjacent to Building One Hundred on the south and eastern sides. Removing the handrail at the top of the south side of the building and creating an eight-foot screen wall on the east and southern sides of the building instead of the original five-foot wall that's currently proposed. Also, we would like to remove thirty-two feet of chain-linked fence from the southwest corner of the Building One Hundred and replace it with an additional eight-foot tall-high screen wall. The front of Building One Hundred will then be the same as the rest of the complex. That's what I'd like to discuss tonight.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
You said remove the rail. Is that a rail that was going to put on a tank or something?
On the, on the southern side of Building One Hundred, the screen wall is attached to the outer face of the building. That screen wall extends to five feet, which is about the top of where the building is at. There's actually a walkway on that side. So, there's going to be a, a three-foot handrail to prevent people from falling off the top of the tank of top of Building One Hundred. So, what we'd like to do is take that handrail off, extend the brick facade or the brick fascia up an existing three feet or so, a little bit more than three feet, and then put the capstone on top of that so that there will not be a handrail and it'll be very similar to what's over by the clarifier.
Hey, go ahead. In, in this wall that we are discussing, I know this council has talked about putting our logo into the wall. Is this the area that we are talking about that this council was talking about putting it in? So, that, that ain't where we're going to do it?
All right.
And follow up with that. So, my question then is, we change this wall, and believe me, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I want to make sure we got everything in line here. How does that affect the changes on the paperwork that we submitted down to I E P A? We have to, knowing that we're removing a handrail now off the design. Is that going to affect? Do we have to let the state know because it's a revolving loan that we have out there and we submitted? Is, is that part of the scope of work that we could change or we can't change?
Jeff?
Yeah, I, I spoke with Finance Director Wilson about this, who's handling a lot of the loan paperwork with H R Green. We built about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar contingency into the loan. So, this would be addressed administratively at first, and then at the end of the contract, we'd probably have to go in and do an official change order if needed. But right now, we wouldn't have to do that.
I, I...
Go, Eugene.
I, I don't think you understand my question.
Sir, I, I think I can understand.
Matt, go ahead.
The removing of the handrail does not affect the, the loan per, a structural. This is basically a solid handrail instead of a, a metal tubed handrail. It's, it's the same structure. It, it provides the same safety and benefit to the person that's on top of that building. So, it doesn't have anything to do with the, the, yeah, it's basically an aesthetic improvement. It meets all the same requirements as the, as the tube handrail.
Okay.
Okay. Mike?
If there's any way we could reword it, if they have a problem downstate with the loan like Alderman Wesley's talking about, we put the word "safety improvement" in there, saying instead of having the handrail, we wanted it to go higher.
Go ahead, Matt.
I mean, it's, if they, if it's in question, if they say something.
I don't think that'll be, no, that's not going to be, that's not going to be an issue at all.
Okay.
Matt, do you want to ask the engineers?
Well, I, Mark gave me the high sign that it's okay, that that's not going to affect the...
Okay. So, what he's saying is accurate then?
That's my opinion.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to approve the brick wall and the extension of the existing...
Second.
Brick wall.
We'll take... Alderman Jacob?
I'm all in favor of this, but this is in addition to what the screen wall we talked about before. Are we all covered now on the screen wall or is there more fence that we're going to come back and say we want to put a brick wall there too?
All right, Jeff.
Yeah, I had to give Matt a little bit of background as he wasn't here when we talked about the first screen wall. And if you remember, when we talked about the first screen wall, we actually rescinded the motion to award the first screen wall. And we had decided subsequently to go back when Phase One B was completed or near completion, either rebid the wall out as a separate project to make sure contractors were sharpening their pencils and we're getting better prices or then ask Williams Brothers to sharpen their pencil, going to them directly. So, there still is an outstanding wall issue, separate from this wall issue.
Any other further questions? All right, let's take a roll call. Oh, go ahead, Eugene.
I, I have a question. What, what is a dollar amount? It says, in this, it says, will be additional added a project of about thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. What is a dollar amount for that wall? It's, it's costing?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, that is the cost minus all the deductions that we're going to be able to get, like, since we're not getting the handrail. The handrail's a deduction. We're not doing the chain-linked fence, so the chain-linked fence will be a deduction. So, the, the, the net sum additional to the contract will be thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
So... I have no problem proving this tonight. The only thing that I would ask to come back to council is saying that I'd like to see what those deductions are off the handrails and where, where it came back. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I can show you that. I can show you that documentation.
That's, that's all I want to make sure.
Right.
Can we put a dollar amount not to exceed?
Thirty-eight, six-five. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, so we, you have a motion on that?
Yeah, I amend my motion to the not to exceed, correct, a dollar amount.
Okay. We agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Any more questions? Let's take a roll call. Oh, go ahead, Matt.
Sorry, just so people understand, this is going to be, is a recommendation that is just going to go back to the contractor now to proceed with this. So, this will not be coming back to...
Go ahead, Jeff.
It'll go, it'll go to council next week, but like I said before, if we need any official change orders down the road, it would be at the end of the project, so we don't have to go to I P A multiple times with change orders. So, it'll go to council for final ratification next week.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I do have one question. This is adding three feet more brick to and mortar to a wall.
Yes, sir.
Is it, does this money include any engineering to see if that foundation can hold more?
Yeah.
Just in case.
Off the standard detail that's already on the project.
It's clear. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. And I have a report and recommendation for Elizabeth Park Agreement. Again, I'll turn that over to staff.
Excuse me?
Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to make a, a motion to accept agreement with Elizabeth Park?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Tony?
Nineteen ninety-one agreement Scott here that the city is going to provide maintenance for the curbs, repair the streetlights, and then they have a private snowplow. What happens in a situation when the, the private snowplow damages property? Who's on the hook for the repairs?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, the, the issue here is this little triangle off shoot off of Elizabeth Drive. It's actually in their best interest for their own crew to plow it because it's such tight quarters. So, by amending the agreement, that gives us protection because they're saying that they're taking over responsibility for the plowing away from us. And this is per their request. That's why we're bringing it together. We'll be salting.
Any other questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. Report and recommendation on Wooddale Road, Addison Road pedestrian improvement grant participation. Again, I'd like to turn that over to, to staff.
Thank you, Chairman. In two thousand and twelve, the city with the assistance of Baxter and Woodman secured a T C M grant due to page majors and managers for pedestrian improvements. The grant was for seventy-five percent of the project, which is an amount not to exceed five hundred and thirty-four thousand. Total amount of the project is over seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Just so you guys are updated, this are some of the improvements that are going to be accomplished with this grant. Dual flashing school zone beacons on Addison Road, as well as upgrading and installing new pedestrian push buttons. At Murray Road and Wooddale Road, dual flashing school zone beacons, push button activated rapid rectangular flashing beacons, upgraded signage and sidewalks to meet all new regulations, M U T C D and A D A. Wooddale and Stonem, right across the street here, a new push button reactive, activated rapid reflecting rectangular flashing beacon, upgraded siding, signage, and sidewalk ramps to meet all new regulations. Wooddale Road between here and Foster, new crosswalks, ramps to meet all new regulations. At Foster and School Street, pedestrian crossing upgrades, countdown timers, upgraded push buttons, sidewalk ramps to meet the A D A regulations. And at Middle Drive, pedestrian crossing upgrades, countdown timers, upgraded push buttons and sidewalk ramps to meet regulations. So, what we're looking for tonight is approval to sign the agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation so we can get on their letting, which will be in June, so we can begin construction in August. The goal was to try to have it done before school starts, but it looks like it may be first part of September before the total completion of the project.
Eugene?
The, on this, you said on, on Wooddale Road too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On Wooddale Road, who's taking, who's going to maintain these knowing that these, Wooddale Road is not ours? I mean, are we taking responsibility maintaining it? I, I just want to...
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, all the rectangular wrapping, rapid rectangular flashing beacons and the dual flashing school zones will be, we will have to maintain them in-house, even though they're on county roads.
By follow-up with that, is county going to give us permission to install this? Is there a letter that they know that this is coming and have they signed off on it?
Matt?
Yes, this all had to be pre-approved by the county in order to get on this I dot letting. And they will extend us a, or we will get a permit to put it on their roads. We'll get a permit and do it that way.
All right.
Yeah, Matt, when you were talking about what you're doing, you said improved crosswalks. What does that mean? Are we, what are we doing in this, in the street in particular? Are we, what are we doing in this, in the street in particular?
Go ahead, Matt.
The crosswalks will all be newly striped, and they will have the perpendicular striped lines instead of diagonal striped lines, or not just the two perpendicular, or two parallel lines that do the crosswalks. So we'll meet the new MUTCD standards for crosswalks.
Art?
They will not be bricked or any fancy stuff, it'll just be like thermoplastic striping with the different color, with the colored blocks.
Go ahead, Art.
Right, 'cause, well, I thought originally, way back when we were talking about this, there were some different faces in the building at that time, that this was gonna be a more decorative crosswalk, other than just the perpendicular white striping with, you know, perpendicular to that.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Matt.
That was originally in the plans. What came out was that due to it not being our road, we had a couple little hurdles to jump over. The asphalt, once the county comes through and does the asphalt, if we put brick pavers or brick stamped asphalt or whatever, they're just gonna grind over it, and we're gonna waste all the money that we just put into it. So then we'd have to either re, and then we would have to redo it again every single time. So, because it would be in there right away, and it would be their responsibility to, when they do come down Wooddale Road, they go into the streets just a little bit of each of the streets on Stonem, right across here at center.
Go ahead, Art.
Yeah. But again, going back to some of the earliest conversations, I mean, we thought about those things and talked about it. I mean, we weren't talking about pavers and cement, there's a thermoplastic product that can use also, so whether we use the thermoplastic white lines that are gonna get ground out also, or a decorative thermoplastic applique, if you will, I don't see how one loses us more than the other. I'm just wondering, you know, again, how that got changed, you know, 'cause I thought we were trying to tie that into other things in the city also.
Matt?
The plans that I saw included the stamped asphalt or other brick pavers. The plans that I saw did not include any of the, this thermoplastic fancier type patterning. So, and that's what we had in our plans that we went to the county with, and the county was not extremely excited about that portion of the project. And that's why we came back and staff talked about it and came up with just the thermoplastic striping of the, of the side, of the crosswalks.
Go ahead, Art.
What part weren't they excited about? They're both the same product, I guess is my point.
Well, like I said, I did not see that, what I, what was on the plans when it was initially unveiled to me was either a stamp, was a stamped brick asphalt, or an inlay. Those were the two options, where we would cut out the asphalt and put an inlay in there for the, for the crosswalk. So if there was some other variation of it, it wasn't in any of the plans that I've ever seen since I've been here.
So Matt, are you saying that they actually turned that down, as far as the decorative street?
They didn't turn it down, but what they stated was that every time that we would come in, we would have to maintain that, and every time that they would come in and do any type of work there, they wouldn't replace in kind, they would replace with solid asphalt. So then we would have to come back and expend the money again to put that, that brick paver in there.
Right, so if we wanted to do this, is it too late to bring it back to them?
I'm not sure about that. I know that we need to get this in the letting, and I have to have the documentation back to them by the twenty-fifth of April, so we can get into the June letting. Otherwise, we're gonna be back to the August letting, and this project wouldn't take place until October or November.
All right, go ahead, Art.
Yeah, I mean, I really want to pursue if we can, we can change that. It's, it seems to be like kind or similar product, not asking for pavers, we're not, I mean, again, all these things were discussed earlier, and this is why we came. I actually did the research and found the product, and then we agreed on that product, which is similar to what you're using, just this is gonna be more decorative.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Alderman Woods. I mean, we could certainly, we don't have to make a snap decision today, go back, talk to Baxter and Woodman, see what the timeline is on the grant. I think the grant's actually good for at least another year. I'm not sure of that, but I think it is, but we can probably get more information back by the time of the next committee meeting, so.
Yeah, I feel kind of the same as Alderman Woods on that. Go ahead, Eugene.
My follow-up with that, now discussing, I have heard tonight here that the county, if we put something in the roadway, that they would not put it back to the way it is. But, when we do something on our roadway that's partly county, they pretty much tell us how to put it back. Like Asser Road, when we did a water main replacement, they pretty much told us, we have to be off that street at a certain time, we had concrete before we had asphalt, so what I'm trying to say is if we could dictate when we tear up their street, how can they dictate to us, when we want to do something to beautify Wooddale, and tell us that they won't put it back the way it was? We have to put Asser Road back the way we do, because we had like, we had like, we did a water main, and they told us we had to be off that road at a certain time.
Yeah.
When we had a water main break, they tell us we have to put concrete down first, then asphalt. So how do they dictate to us? And now they're going to tell us that if we put something in there, and we maintain it, they'll just grind it all up? I don't buy that. I really don't, because they dictate to us, when we do a road project, when we tie the water main off of Mount Hurst, across roadway, they made us, they made us pull a permit, they made us dig it up, concrete, then asphalt. So I don't buy that, and you can tell county that too.
Jeff?
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. Hogan can attest, anytime you go on anybody else's right-of-way on their street, County Road, IDOT, they don't like brick pavers, they don't like any of this nonsense, they like their standard asphalt. Dennis?
No, what I'm hearing is far... Sure.
As everyone knows, with Nineteen Wooddale, we are providing stamped crosswalks because of the city's request to help the aesthetics of the intersection, so on. IDOT and TOLI don't prefer, obviously, brick pavers because of maintenance reasons, but there is stamped asphalt, stamped concrete, that we have a special provision pay item for, specifically at Nineteen Wooddale. So, the input I was gonna provide to you, as far as with Baxter and Woodman doing their plans, should be an easy fix for them to make a change to their plans. It's simply designating the crosswalk area as far as being stamped concrete, they can get a special provision to do it, and introduce the pay item in the bid for IDOT for the contractor to bid on stamped crosswalk, as opposed to just your typical high-visibility thermoplastic that you would see, vertical horizontal lines and so on. So, that's all I can offer to the city, but again, it should, and under the timeframe you're under, in my opinion, it's a pretty quick, easy fix.
I'd like to just here have a consensus, if we want to do that or not.
Are you? Yes.
Mike?
Do what?
Have...
The plastic or the stamp or...
Right, the stamp. If we want to go back and have them stamped.
I haven't seen this decorative, decorative thermoplastic yet, so.
Go ahead.
We actually have the pay item and special provision, and I can certainly, we had it in our pre-final plans that we submitted, we did some research with DuPage County and so on, and I guess Crystal Lake, actually McKenney County used this with Crystal Lake, and so the special provision we have, we certainly can pass it on to the city, the city can pass it on to Baxter and Woodman for their review, and for consistency reasons throughout the city, because we're doing this at Nineteen and Wooddale, it would be a similar special provision and look and so on throughout the city.
Art, did you have another question?
My only thing is I don't want to try to slow the project down, so I would be willing to meet and show you the stuff we looked at, but it seems like Mr. Hogan's already got it. I just want some unification of the city, and I know that we were doing that on Irving and Wooddale, so when you threw the just striped lines at me, it was all I could do to contain myself, that that's what we were gonna see, and we weren't gonna have the upgraded walk, so.
Go ahead, Matt.
We can work with, if Mr. Hogan would be more than happy to get that to my meeting tomorrow, I could talk to our contract, or our engineer at Baxter and Woodman, and see if we can get that put into the plans. The one issue with that is, and that we'll have to remember, is that this road out here isn't in all that great shape, and it may need to be redone within the next two to five years. And whatever work we do out there, and I understand what Mr. West, or Alderman Wesley says, but it's their road, they can dictate to us what they want to have done. If they grind it, if we install it, and they grind it out and get rid of it, we're, I'm gonna be back here asking for money to put those crosswalks back in. And that, I mean, that's kind of the nature of this beast when you're dealing with someone else's right-of-way.
Go ahead, Art.
I just want to, one, I appreciate you looking out for the city and their money, but, I mean, we discussed this, so two years could be five, right? And we're all about moving forward and beautifying the city, so we're, they're gonna have to replace the crosshatched brick pattern, whatever thermoplastic that we use, or what Mr. Hogan's gonna present, or the white lines. There's gonna be a cost. Incrementally, it might be a little more, but I don't think it's absorbently more that we don't go ahead and we do things that we don't want to do, that just doesn't make sense to me.
So we do have a consensus on going back? Yes, everyone?
Yeah, we table? We table?
Go ahead, Jeff. We would need to table this.
Till next week?
Till next week, okay.
Pass it, we've given them direction, they're gonna come back with the corrections next week.
Yeah, so would the, would the amounts be the same, or would that be...
Yeah, the amount of the project, seven hundred and twelve thousand is where it tops out at.
Right, but our cost?
Our cost is twenty-five percent of that, and that's where, that's where we, this project can't be, if it goes over seven hundred and twelve thousand, then we're on the hook for whatever is over seven hundred and twelve thousand.
Right, so...
So, if we do this, what I guess I would ask is that we pass this in some format this evening, allow us the opportunity to get back to you and do a presentation again at the council meeting on Thursday, and try to keep this on that April twenty-fifth letting, 'cause that's, I mean, that's the goal of this, is to get it done, 'cause I'd like to get it done as quickly into the school year as possible. So, I understand that we, there's some work for us still to do, and we're more than able or willing to see if we can get this accomplished before next Thursday. And if it doesn't happen, then we'll table it and move on.
All right, so we'll do, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Matt, even if it's not a hundred percent next week, we still have one more meeting, which is the twenty-fourth. It'll be a committee meeting, but let's face it, if everybody says yes, I don't think we're gonna have to worry about the following week, so we'll make that twenty-fifth.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the pedestrian, the Wooddale Addison Road pedestrian improvements.
I'll say.
As discussed with the upgraded...
Second.
Roll call?
Does anyone have a second?
Yeah, we had a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Then we have the report and recommendation for the Wooddale Road, Addison Road pedestrian improvement construction management. I'll turn it over to staff, please.
Thank you, sir. This contract is to have Baxter and Woodman on-site to make sure the project is going as planned, and to make sure that all federal documents are filled out correctly, so the grant goes smoothly. Baxter and Woodman designed this project, got it ready for the bidding, and will be doing some work for us tomorrow on getting it completed. And it is our current practice that the, for the city, that the same company continue to do the construction management work during the construction phase of the project. So I would ask that we would sign this contract in the amount of, an amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars with Baxter and Woodman, which is below the budgeted amount for the CIP of eighty thousand dollars.
Art?
Yeah, one question, should we, are we gonna do the same thing here, or is there gonna be an incremental cost?
Maybe we should, maybe we should do a motion contingent on final approval for the first part.
This, this part of the project, or this construction management, will be to manage the whole project. It really doesn't have this, this additional work that we've talked about. The guy's gonna be out here, whether they're putting thermoplastic down, or brick pavers down, or anything. So, this is gonna be the, to manage the whole entire project, to make sure the flashing beacons are up in the right spot, to make sure that the electrical works and all those kinds of things, so. Whereas it may be contingent upon the other project, other issue, if we're gonna do this project at all, period, then we need to pass this, whether it be tonight or sometime in the future.
Go ahead, Art.
Yeah, I don't have a problem passing it, and I'm okay, I mean, we could do the verbiage that not to exceed seventy-one, three-twenty, but if we're effectively changing the scope, I know that you say, dollar-wise, it's not gonna raise it that much, but I don't know that they're agreeing to that too. They might come back and go, well, that process takes longer. I mean, I don't know what, I assume that that's not gonna happen, so as long as you're, everybody's okay with that.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, maybe we just won't limit ourselves on the not to exceed, if we're not comfortable with that, we'll pass the construction management contract to Baxter and Woodman, pending final numbers, once we get the other information.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
So not lock ourselves in.
Second.
Pete?
I was gonna make the motion, did anyone make the motion? Did, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Report and recommendation, dedication of vacant city property for public road purpose. Wooddale Road, Irving Park Road intersection improvement project number one. Turn that over to staff?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you have in front of you is a dedication of a vacant city parcel that's going to be used in the Wooddale Road, Irving Park Road intersection improvements project. And this particular parcel is gonna be used in the new alignment of Commercial Street, but as far as the dedication goes, we're just dedicating this piece of land to the project for roadway improvements.
Do I have a motion? Go ahead, Art.
Yeah, let me just get these, made me print a lot of stuff here. I was having a little problem as I was going through all this, what exactly, what portions we're dedicating? The highlighted, the shaded portions? This is a two-step process?
Jeremy, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, it is the shaded portion there, and this will, there will be a resolution next week at council if this passes, and that resolution is basically the vehicle to dedicate the property, so.
So, and this one, this parallel line to Wooddale Road, that's the only part that we're dedication, dedicating there?
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, that, what you're pointing to there is the, is the second item in the agenda.
On the, on the first one, it's this whole section?
Yes, that's correct.
That I highlighted. So the second part of that question, is that road still a Wooddale Road, or does that become part of the county's property under the dedication?
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Yes, the city retains all ownership rights to that property.
Okay, I'm done.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I had those same questions. Before the meeting, I spoke to Mr. Ilerz. Basically, they're taking thirty feet on the east side of that property. Correct, Jeremy?
Oh, no, that's actually on a different item. That's the...
The other one?
That's a...
At the, at the triangle where the sculptures are?
Item ten.
Yeah, that's not item number one, right?
Oh, there's the dedication.
Yeah.
I'd that offer one.
So we have a second on that?
Also approved?
Yeah.
There is a motion?
I think, was there a motion? I think, was there a motion? No one, okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. Have a report and recommendation, dedication of vacant city property for public road purpose. Wooddale Road, Irving Park Road Intersection Improvement Project Number Two. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, and what we have here is, is basically an identical dedication for the prod, to the project. Um, and this parcel is a narrow strip there alongside Wooddale Road, and it's going to accommodate the widening of Wooddale Road and also the sidewalk area there. So again, it is the same type of dedication as the first item.
Art?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. Have a report and recommendation, I dot offered to purchase a portion of partial one K A zero 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 four for thirty-seven thousand for intersection safety improvement at Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road. Any questions? I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All of four? Do we need a roll, oh, because we have thirty-seven thou, I'm sorry, roll call?
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizemoreski?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Have a report and recommendation, I dot offered to purchase portion of partial one K A zero zero one two for a hundred and nine thousand for intersection safety improvement at Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road. That is my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. Items should be considered at future meetings. Uh, A, Intersection Safety Improvement Phase Three Construction Supervision Contract, that'll be April twenty-fourth. Anything, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, there's a couple other items coming down the pipeline with H R Green in relation to the Tollway project. You may remember that the council requested a letter from the Tollway stating before we entered into a contract with an engineering firm to help us with our sanitary sewer work outside of the scope, that we wanted the Tollway to guarantee a reimbursement of our cost. So we just got that, so that'll be in your packet tomorrow. And then now that we got that, we can then enter it into agreement with an engineering firm to help design that work. So that'll be coming forward probably on the twenty-fourth. And then, um, there's one other Tollway item with H R Green, extending our current contract with Scott Markort, who helps us with the day-to-day Tollway project, extending that contract. So it'll be two Tollway-related items on the twenty-fourth.
Go ahead, Mike.
Brother, where we stand on the Itasca Road light situation?
Jeff?
Itasca Street?
Yeah, uh, building departments working with ComEd, new, I forgot, new, I forgot what the individual office was, but I contacted ComEd. City got the bill, they wanted us to pay upfront. I believe the check will be on the next check register for the council for the installation of the lights. I think there was a ballpark of the end of May for the installation of the lights.
Anything, Mayor?
Jeff, as far as the utilities at Dorn Dale, do we need to get this, put this on next week's agenda, or we got time? I know the tollways.
Gotcha.
No, I, I checked with Scott Markort, he's perfectly fine with that timing on the twenty-fourth. It syncs with their schedule, it syncs with everybody's schedule, so it's fine.
Go ahead, Art.
I guess this question's from Matt. Could you tell me if all the stuff is done in the new building of, over by the water treatment plant? I mean, is the water all hooked up in the new building and did, did the city employees hook that up? I know the guy who was here said the city was going to do it, and is it all done?
Matt, go ahead.
I believe you're speaking of the new administration building at the treatment plant?
Yes.
Okay, um, the plumber, we hired...
Whoa, 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 what do you, what do you mean plumber? The city was going to do it?
A plumber was hired to install...
Excuse me, stop. I don't understand the word plumber, because the engineer here says it was going to be done in-house. So, I don't understand the word plumber, unless it's a city employee.
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the expertise, um, when we got out there and kind of looked at it a little bit more, we decided it was safer to have a plumber hired to do it. I think the cost was about three to six thousand dollars.
It was, uh, just over fifty-seven hundred dollars, I believe.
So...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Was there, was there a memo put out on this, or, because I remember sitting right up here, right in the seat last time I... I'm going to get my hearing checked, because last time I was here, I heard in-house, but I didn't remember hearing anything about hiring a plumber, which I don't understand that word now.
Eugene, what?
I, I'll do a follow-up. This, this is a thing that, that the, uh, city staff's got the authority, go ahead and do. The reason why, the reason why they hire plumber is because, because equipment that had been installed, the gas line and anything, it was a liability issue that the city was going to take on. If that new equipment was not hooked up the right way, and, and that was the reason why the liability. And I, staff felt the same way, and, and, and we talked about this, and, and the reason why they went that route is because of liability issue for the city.
Who's we? Who's we?
I met with Alderman Woods and our Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So don't say we, because we is the council, not over there.
We just didn't think it was going to be a, a, a big issue knowing that it's a liability issue that was online here.
My point...
And the timing mattered.
My point on this is, we had an engineer here sitting, sitting in that chair saying that it was going to be in-house and this count, and I don't care who hooked it up, but I want to be informed. If I got an engineer, then I'm paying millions of dollars here and he's making that statement for that sewer treatment plant. I don't care we, who, whatever, I want to know about it that, oh, we changed course.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I'm sure the manager's making a note, anytime we have some type of change where we were going to do it in-house and we can just shoot out a quick email. Is that okay?
Gotcha.
Yeah, I, I don't need an, to make a note, we already do that in the monthly reports. So the next monthly report that comes out, any subtle changes like this or little items like this, they get summarized on why it was done. Um, you may remember in your monthlies for treatment plant activity, gives you kind of like an update on the directives of the small change items, so we don't burden you guys and come to you with the three thousand dollar big decision that you need to make on a Thursday night.
Okay, Art, go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, to the original question, I mean, I asked the question when, when, when we said that we were going to do it in-house, because there were pipes sticking out of the wall that didn't have any connectors or connections to them, so that meant people would have to cut pipe, and we were told that that wouldn't happen. So I, I'm not upset, I went there, Eugene saw it, he called, I talked to Matt, we looked at it, it has to be done. Made sense to get a plumber. I think Alderman Eugene, or Roy Wesley's concern is that we were told differently. Not that it needed to be done, or that you needed to get a professional to do it, that when directly asked that question, that we were said it would be done and then it just got changed and nobody said anything, so.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I swear I'm going to get a Twitter account for you guys and give you the updates, because I can't get them out quick enough.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
One more thing?
More time, go ahead.
It's not under, uh, it's not under your committee, but I'd like to bring it up to Building and Zoning about Front Street. I know we're waiting for the financials on Front Street, it's been a month. We need to, this project's been going on, can I finish? This project's been going on for maybe two and a half years. And before you know it, we're going to end up the same thing, like, it's not going to get done this year again. I, I need, we need to put pressure on these guys, if you're going to do it, let's do it. We're giving them a hundred thousand dollars each, total of two hundred thousand, because there's two owners. If they don't want to do it, I'm sure there's another business in town that will be willing to take the money and help them along with it and...
Jeff, did you hear that?
Yeah, I was just going to say, um, we are waiting on, we got one of the financials confirmed already. We're waiting on the second financial. If it's council's direction to pull the plug after a certain date, give me the date, pull the plug.
Okay, anything else? To Eugene, did you hear something?
Yeah, I would like to, um, visit two items, um, on the next future, at the next meeting. I would like to revisit the, the way we do contracts. Due to the fact, just because they designed the project, they shouldn't have the full reign to, to do the construction. Obviously, we ran in a, a problem with a contractor this last time. And unfortunate part, that contract was also looped into another project that's going to happen in this town. And it really concerns me that they were in a, against it. So I, I guess it would be a legal opinion if we could do that. We had brought this up before, they already did a project in the sound, now they're doing another project. We weren't happy with the project that they did, but now they're getting another major project just because they designed it. I really would like to look at, I'm not saying if the guy designed it, that the firm has done work before, they do excellent work, but we had a project, come back here and bite us in the butt again. And that was the reason, now they got another contract that's, I, I think will be more difficult in our town, along the creek there, more delicate work, because if that don't go right, then we got a major problem out there. So I, I would like to revisit that. And then the other thing, I would like to, um, uh, give a verbal update on the progress of the treatment plant, because I have had several people call me and want to know, we spending all this money, but we don't know what's going on in the treatment plant. It's nice that we get in our packet, but I think it's only fair that every now and then we get a presentation or someone tell us, this is, this building's going up, this is how far... Therefore, the taxpayers actually know what's going on in that facility. I, I mean, I don't think that will be that hard to do, I mean...
Jeff, we get it.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea, maybe at a committee meeting, I don't know if it's the twenty-fourth, but maybe sometime in May, we, we have a, a nice little presentation, you know, from what it used to be, how Phase One A got completed, you know, what's scheduled around, show some pictures before and after, just so everybody can see it at home, that's an excellent idea. And as far as the, the construction contracts with the design and supervision, um, I think Alderman Wesley's concern was a little bit different than what you're expressing, whereas the, the problem you're talking about is we actually lumped two road projects into one contract. So we didn't necessarily, I'm not going to say we didn't like the performance, but we lumped two contracts, two projects into one contract with one firm. Perhaps in the future, only one contract at a time for street projects. I don't think it's a design-construction problem, I think it was too many, uh, projects under one contract. So I'm trying to say with economies of scale, maybe we bit ourselves on the butt and maybe break that down, not necessarily the design and supervision. I think that's where you're going.
And we did that, what, to save money, Jeff, is that why?
We did that for economies of scale, um, and to try to, I mean, save some money.
Save money, yeah. Pete?
This week, I had, had the pleasure of meeting our city lobbyist, Scott Markort. And prior, prior to me being elected, I, I know there was talk up here to put, give him a contract for us, like a two or three-year contract. I'm not sure what committee that would go under, but I'd like to discuss that again, bring that up again. Seems like he's doing a great job for the city and really fighting for us and getting the city grant money.
Okay, anything else? Make a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Oppose? Meeting adjourned.